Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Planning Commission for November 23rd, 2009 at the new City Hall and the new commission chambers, which we're all pretty impressed with so far. At this time, we'll call the meeting to order and ask for any public comment on items not listed on the agenda. And seeing no one here at this time, we'll move on to Planning Commission Minutes. There were a lot of minutes to go through here, so I'll leave it up to you, Joe, on what you'd like to do. I read through them all. The only ones that I could not read were the ones that were in black.
Yeah, I think we had a problem with the color on those pages when we converted them over to electronic documents, so apologies for that. We will ... Yes, it's on. Hello?
Okay.
Test, test?
Better.
Okay. Yeah, when we converted that document over to electronic, it turned it blue and black, so we will be happy to bring those again at the next meeting.
Okay.
August, what was the date on that? It said a minute.
August 13th.
August 13th, 2007 minutes, so...
Yeah, and these do go way back to, these go back to '07. I mean, this is quite a few minutes to digest, so...
He was able to look through all of them and get a preliminary review.
Yeah, a very brief preliminary review, so... But most of the content is there. There may be some other things that should be hap- if you want to point out those, we will be happy to look at those.
It looked to me like they were nearly verbatim transcripts of the tapes, of the audio tapes. Is that...
They're very long, detailed, sets of minutes.
I did skim them. I didn't scan them, but I did notice that the minutes from January 8th, 2007, were approved at the March 12th, 2007 meeting.
Okay.
And the other thing that I did notice was that the March 12th, 2007 meeting minutes should say March 12th, 2007, and not March 12th, 2006 at the top.
Okay. Thank you. I'll be sure to change that.
There were a few, I mean, there were actually quite a few commissioners that were not identified in discussion. Honestly, I can't remember that far back to fill that in. I think it's probably all right, though, if we, if we knew it came from this, from the dais as opposed to someone in the audience.
Correct.
I'm fine with that if everybody else is.
Yeah, we, if we didn't know who was speaking, we didn't make any attempt to second-guess it.
And then my last que- I guess question would be, all of these are on tape, or are they not?
We will have audio for all of these, I believe, and we didn't start videoing, well, we will have video through Yolanda Fos Tigo.
Audio, yeah. I meant audio, sorry.
Yeah, yes.
So, we've got them.
Yeah, these are all transcribed from audio, so, to the extent that we have that.
Okay. Okay, any other comments, or motion, or discussion? From anyone? Anyone?
Well, I agree with you that it's difficult to piece together the exact record, but in the, as I skim through, I think these are fairly accurate, and I do think they're probably taken from the audio tapes, so... If, I would move to approve the minutes as mened this evening.
Except for these?
Except for the...
Except for those August 13th.
August 13th, '07. Which is illegible.
Okay. Do you have a second? Second, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to approve backlog of 2007 Planning Commission minutes with the exception of the August, sorry, 13th, 2007 minutes. Nancy, do I do this vote on the machine, or can I just do it?
As normal.
Okay. Let's see. Chair Powell, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Dunn?
Aye.
Commissioner Griner?
Aye.
Commissioner Wazra?
Aye.
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you very much. Next, we've got the Planning Commission hearing, L-08-01 Code Amendments, and we are opening this up to, as a hearing, so we'll read the legal information for the public. "A staff report has been prepared for the application has been made available seven days prior to this evening's hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to the applicant's proposal. If anyone would like me to read those criteria, please let me know. Staff has analyzed the criteria which are contained in the staff report along with any written comments and input that has been received through the public notification process for the application. The quasi-budicial hearing procedure the commission will follow is set out in state law and the already city municipal code. The hearing procedure steps are shown on the chart to my left." Is there a chart to my left? Or is it going to be video?
Commissioner Powell?
Yes.
Actually, because this is a legislative, I don't think...
We don't have to do that.
You don't have to do it.
Very good.
And I'm going to stop you right now rather than...
All right, I won't, I won't. All right, very good, thanks.
I must forget something about that.
And I was like, no, it's a legislative.
This doesn't make sense. Okay, now, never mind then, we'll move forward. We don't need to go through all that. Everyone is watching. All right, with that all, to the other staff.
All right. Thank you, Chair Powell. Tonight is the first night looking at the six-month update of the L-08-01 Code Amendment file that you spent a year on, last year. And if you remember, when the City Commission approved the code updates in the ordinance, they placed two dates in the ordinance, the November 9th date for the Planning Commission and a January, I think, 20th date for the City Commission to reopen the file for a six-month update to see if there are any issues that need to be redressed. With that many changes happen to a code, we always want to make sure that there's an ability to address any issues. When the codes were adopted last spring, there were also some outstanding issues that were not addressed during that update, and during, in the attached memo, your packet, we tried to identify those and kind of explain the next step. So what I'd like to do tonight is really just go through the memo item by item, and myself or Pete Walter will discuss it and get your comments tonight and get direction. We plan on coming back to the December 14th meeting with additional code changes, and at this point, I don't believe we'll be having the December 28th Planning Commission meeting, but that's something that can be decided at the end of this evening. But I anticipate we'll probably have one or two more meetings in January, and then this will move on to the City Commission level for their hearings in February, March. The, in order of the memo, temporary structures. If you remember, previously, there was a discussion about regulating temporary structures under 200 square feet, and especially in the material type, cloth or fabric-like structures. And at that time, staff was waiting for direction from City Commission, and we received that direction last spring, and they directed us to come back with code to make that happen, to regulate that. And I think, I didn't have any code tonight to review. The actual code section will be quite simple, it'll be one or two sentences, but what I'd like to talk tonight about is just the ramifications and the implementation of that, and some things to think about and maybe getting some direction from the Planning Commission and then from the future of the City Commission. First thing to think about is, do we put this in our nuisance code in Title 13? So it's, once it becomes effective that day, everyone is affected by it? Or do we put it in Title 17, so that you have the ability to have a grandfathered issue? Or if you can show, if you've had this up for so many years, you can be grandfathered in? So that's two questions. Does it want to be a nuisance, or is it going to be land use? That's one set. The second is, how exactly does the Planning Commission envision the public education aspect of this? Because there's definitely needs to be heads-up given to the community, what are the reasons for it, why are we doing it? Do we want to create maybe an amortization time where maybe it's January 1st, 2011, where it becomes enacted to give people enough time to maybe, to plan for what they're going to do with their existing fabric temporary structure, or to make sure that they don't purchase one in the future? So that's one thing to think about. How do we want to create the date that it starts? And what kind of public education do we want to do to get the word out? One thing we could do is put a big flyer in utility billing to get that out. Obviously, the normal path of talking to neighborhood associations and CIC, but the person that's not really connected to the city, how can we get that information out to them? Obviously, an article in the newspaper, but those are code, the larger implementation. The code itself can be written, but I think on my end, the staff is giving the public enough heads-up that when it actually starts to be enforced, they know about it, and it's not taking them by surprise.
Sure, sure. Before we have that discussion, I wanted to find out, the folks in the audience, if you're here for this discussion, or did you have some other issue you wanted to bring up, and you'd have to wait through all this?
Thank you. Um, we do, and I could be talking to Christina.
If you want to come up there. Can I?
Yeah, they're here for a potential episony of a property.
Oh, so should we do that?
Um, but...
Actually, it's not our property. It's the property used around us. I could, I need to show somebody this.
Sure, well...
No, good of you.
And if you can, if you can sit down, identify yourself, let us know your name and city residence.
Okay.
And I just, this is going to be a long discussion. I just want you to have...
Well, I appreciate it. This is almost Thanksgiving.
It's quite interesting.
I appreciate it.
So I'm Colleen Maholic, and my husband?
And I'm Fred Haller.
And we live at...
And for recording tonight, make sure you speak into this mic.
Oh.
And we live at 19837 South Leland Road, and the other property we own is at 19851 South Leland Road, and I brought the plat map there, and I just gave the...
Which is directly across from each other, split by an easement.
A 70-foot easement. And about, a couple of years ago, we were surrounded by Syn-tax. Project was going to buy up all the land on three sides of us, for the most part, except for one little area, and it was Zone R6. And on our 198, on both of ours, it's Zone R10. And we just think, now that Syn-tax has backed out of the whole project, that R6 is just way too high of a density for that area, which is very rural still. I mean, we have Lake Deer and, you know, wildlife, and the other big concern was all of the traffic has been brought to our attention. You know, there's so much traffic on Leland Road already, and if you go, we would like to propose going back to R10 for all of that land that Syn-tax was going to purchase that is on that plat map, which is three owners' properties. And even when we were at, talking to, was it John at the city?
No, Bob Colasen.
Oh, yeah, Bob. And he even said, "Yeah, that's right on the fringe of, you know, rural, you know, I don't know why it's R6."
Well, just to step you back, initially, we were not part of Oregon City. We were annexed in, and that was all proposed and actually pushed through by Syn-tax, because it was part of their offer that if they were able to annex all the properties in the area, that they would go ahead with this project. And they brought it in as R10, and then they came in to have it rezoned to R8. And I wasn't at the meeting, but I guess during the meeting, it was suggested that, "Well, why are you asking for R8? I mean, why not R6?" And they said, "Well, we didn't think we," Syn-tax said, "we didn't think we would be able to get R6," and at that particular meeting, it was then rezoned to R6. So what we have in the area is what I consider to be very high density, and there is, like Colleen was saying, there is quite a bit of traffic on Leland. And what was interesting is, is we approached the city at one time about getting a personal driveway onto Leland Road, and they said, "Well, I don't really think you can do that because we're trying to eliminate access to Leland Road as it is." And now, this is for a single-family residence, and so I kind of find it a little unusual that, you know, we can't get one access to Leland Road, but we can put in a bunch of, you know, I think it was close to over 100 lots, all R6 in that area.
It was over 100, like 120-some lots.
And we just feel that, you know, I realize that, you know, you're, sometimes, you know, Metro has a CISO and this kind of thing, too, but I think for the overall appeal of the city and the area, you know, I think that that might be just a little bit too high a density, and we'd just like to appeal to you about the possibility of changing to possibly R10.
And Christina suggested we may come to this meeting to put it on the table for discussion. And if you look at the plat map, it does border Clackamas County, and there's valleys and big old fir trees, and we just think it would just be way too dense, densely populated with R6.
And, and I mean, for that matter, we eventually would like to do something with our property, and, I mean, we'd like to stay there, but I'm sure if we're going to have a lot of R6 properties around there, you know, we're probably not as interested in, you know, remaining in that area. Because we did move there because of, you know, the nice surroundings, anyways. Okay, well, I guess, this is something I think we probably ought to do some research into and bring back to a work session or a meeting, we can talk about it.
Yeah, it's now on the record now, so we...
Yeah, because I, I mean, I do remember the meeting, and I remember the plan, and I'm pretty sure when we talked about the R6 and being on the outside of the, you know, the growth area that we were looking at, that was all kind of in a long discussion about where we are going to expand, where are we going to come up with these homes that we're supposed to have? And that was one of the areas that we chose, because it was, we had an opportunity. I think that was probably more than anything else. So now that there's no opportunity, we certainly could review it. I think we should review it.
Yeah, what I can do on staff level is, at the next meeting, I can provide a background of the staff report. It was actually rezoned as part of a subdivision application.
Prior to subdivision?
Yeah, not related to, you know, the L-file. So I can give a little background on that staff report, and then I can give a little background on downzoning in general, and kind of the legal ramifications of downzoning, because they're out there, definitely. So I can give an update at the next meeting.
And what would the process need to be? Isn't it a Type 2 process? Wouldn't it have to go through, just like the developer had to go through that process? Would they have to go through the same process to change it back?
Well, we're in an L, you know, we're in a legislative process now, so if the Planning Commission chooses, I mean, to up or downzone, or parallelism, I guess, if there's an option, but, you know, with this update, you still have the ability to look at legislative rezoning, or you could choose not to look at this property.
So we're already within the process, we could do...
You could choose to, or choose not to, and what I can do on a staff level is kind of give you a recap background on the staff report, and I might even just be attach the staff report and findings, and then have a conversation with Bill Kavizman about downzoning, because I know there are issues, and there may even be Measure 49 issues with downzoning.
Yeah, so I, well, obviously, we need to do some research on this, but now that you've brought it forward, it's on the, on the record.
Okay.
We'll take it, staff will take care of that and get it back to us, and we'll have some discussion, of course, notify you, so you can be a part of it.
So if you fill out the blue form, you'll kind of officially be in our noticing. On our city website, under Meetings, on the main page, you can, about five days before any Planning Commission meeting, which meets the second and fourth Monday of the month, you can get an access to the electronic copy, so you can see, and we will mail out versions, but if you want to quickly look online before you get it in the mail, you can see electronic versions of the agenda and all staff reports.
Okay, and would it help if we prepared some kind of a document of all the reasons why we think it should be zoned back to R10 like we were led to believe that it was going to be? Would that be helpful?
Well, yeah, I mean, you absolutely have the right to want to do that. You don't put that in, submit it to staff.
The record's open now, and so basically, from now until it gets sent to the City Commission, even to the very end of the City Commission, the record's always open. So you can always email me.
Okay.
And I can basically take that email, and at the next available meeting, I'll enter the record. You don't have to actually attend the meeting if you don't. You can't make it.
Okay, so should we come back to the December 14th meeting?
Well, that's...
Was that too soon?
That's going to be up to staff.
What I, for the December 14th meeting, I'll put together some talking points about the issues, you know, recap of the staff report and some of the downzoning legal issues, and you can read the staff report, and if you want to show up, you can. If you don't, it's not going to be the, the Planning Commission's not going to make any final decision on that meeting.
But of course, you're welcome. We, you know, we'll always give you the opportunity to speak.
Okay.
Thank you.
If you have any questions. You're welcome.
Thanks for taking care of us.
Oh, yeah, you got it. Thank you. I appreciate it.
It's kind of cloudy tonight.
Yeah. Yeah, you have one filling out, and then just give it to us.
With all your details, thanks.
Didn't look like they were here for the codes.
Oh.
You never know.
Do we have any...
I'm sorry.
The map back?
Oh, yeah.
Grab that out of my...
There you go.
I might need that. I'll make a copy of it.
Yeah, if it's on the record now, we probably should have that copy.
Thanks.
Okay, well, let's get back to the discussion at hand, and we're talking about...
Temporary structures.
Temporary structures in the code.
And so the, on my, you know, I'm the staff that's kind of directed to implement it, so I'm thinking the devil in the details here, you know?
As you always do.
As I, you know, task to do. You know, how do you go about letting the public know that something they may have already purchased very well may not be allowed in the future, to a, to a level that they feel comfortable that when the date comes that they've had enough notice, rather than "I didn't know," and then suddenly getting five people at a City Commission meeting wanting to talk about, "I never knew about, you know, never knew this happened." So that's what I, that's what I think about.
Well, is, I guess, before we go there, we don't have any code at this point. What is, what was the direction?
Right, the direction was to not allow them.
Not, so, I mean, we're talking about severely...
Yeah. The, well, there's two, you could just not allow it and just say, "All accessories must be made out of the following materials," and you exclude fabric or cloth, or vinyl.
How was the greenhouses dealt with?
That, and then the other one is, how do you deal with, like, going to Freddy's and buying that little kind of furniture canopy outdoor thing where the...
Well, that's, that's smaller than, than we're talking about.
Well, right now...
By definition, anything under...
That's the problem, is right now, we have that break at 200.
Right.
And so it's, it's a nice break, because under 200 doesn't need building permits, and so when you come in for a building permit, we can review you. When you're doing something that doesn't require a building permit, the person may thought they've done their due diligence, but they may have, you know, talked to the wrong department, or looked up the wrong thing, or didn't even think about it, and then they go purchase or build something, and then they find out later through court enforcement that it's illegal, because they weren't, they didn't know that, you know, they weren't tagged through the permitting process. And that's always the problem. I mean, the storage district has that with windows. Whenever you have a regulation that's not tagged with permit, it's hard to...
And what was the size, again, that it was under?
Anything, today, anything under 200 square feet is not regulated for material.
10 by 20?
Yeah, so it's basically a lawn car garage, is this 200 square feet and under. So we used to have it at 120 square feet, and that was the link, but building permits went up to 200 a while back, and so it was moved to 200, because once again, it's that problem of, when you don't have a permit, how do you make sure you're enforcing and educating the public about permitted?
Well, I wasn't, refresh my memory, it seems to me that we were talking about having these in the, in the front facade. I mean, behind in the back.
Well, right now, they're not allowed in the front, today.
Right.
Now, this is allowed anywhere on property.
They're not allowed, but they are out there. I mean, that was our big issue.
They're, no, today, you can have a membrane structure under 299 square feet, 200 square feet, as long as it's behind the front of the house.
Right.
You can't have it in your driveway, but you can have it to the side or rear of your house. That, so that's today. And so the question is, if we want to further regulate that, and say you don't want it, maybe you don't want it visible from the right-of-way, do you not want it at all in rears? Do you not want anything between 120 and 200 that's membrane structure? But you'll allow something under 120, and that's fine, you can do that, but that's, when you do that, then you start really having to work hard on the education factor, which can be done, but that's a conscious effort of how are we going to educate?
Well, and a big part of this is, is the code enforcement is having issues, and that's one of the things that we wanted to try and resolve, is there's solid waste being stored under these things, regardless of whether on the side of the house, to the back house, the front house, and it's dangerous. And so, you know, if you have in the back of your house, I mean, it's probably still dangerous, but I don't want to see it from the street.
Well, and then if you're a corner, so do you say, one option to take is say, you know, membrane structures, and however we define membrane structures, are allowed as long as they cannot be seen from a right-of-way? But then, you know, then if your right-of-way's above, do you just say, "At pedestrian level of right-of-way?" I mean, that's one option, too.
Just to be clear, like, all the folks, say, with, have the, the side of their house with their boat, or their camper trailer, all that covered with those structures, those would now be no longer allowed?
If you choose, like, right now, you can't have it in front of your house.
Right.
So if you wanted to put your boat under a membrane structure, you'd have to have it to the side or rear of your building. So if we wanted to say that those aren't allowed at all, we could say that, we could say if those aren't allowed, if they're, can be seen from the public right-of-way at a pedestrian level, that's an option. We'd say they're not allowed between 120 and 200 square feet, because right now, 200 and over, we don't allow them to be membrane. We require them to be compatible with the house. So we could, we could just move the compatible with the house down to 120 square feet, so you could still have, so you may still be able to have your boat if you have a 100 square foot and you have a little teeny boat. I mean, it's like a little rowboat thing, you know?
Literally.
But, yeah, but that, I mean, these are all options, but I guess the biggest point I want to come across tonight is, when you are under 200 square feet, it's a code enforcement education, and how is the best way to enact this code in concert with an education program so people feel that when the code is enacted, that they've had advanced notice? And a reason, what's the reason why?
Right.
Why are we reading this?
Well, I think that's reasonable. I think we should give it, you know, a year before we enact it. I, you know, I personally think it should be a nuisance, as opposed to, you know, grandfathering anything, and I think it should be considered a nuisance. In fact, it is a nuisance, you know, and the public education piece can be through water bill, it can be through a website, you have it with a big picture of it and say, you know, with a line through it, you know, obvious things. A library, postings, I mean, there's lots of things we can do, I think, that would help that. And the reasons, I mean, there's lots of reasons. I mean, the biggest problem we have, like everything else, is we've got a group of people that abuse that, and it's causing an issue for, and it costs, it's costing the city a lot of money to go in and take care of these problems out of the field. Enough that code compliance is having a big, quite a bit of difficulty in getting it taken care of.
Right.
So do I want to add more work with them? Not necessarily, but I want to give them, I want to give them the ability to fix it. And that's what, that's where we started this discussion, I think. You and I probably did it. So, you know, I don't know what you guys think. We talked about it at the, at the initial code discussions, and everybody agreed that that's something we should look at. So I'm open to certainly, to some more discussion on what we should do, what size, where, et cetera. But my, I'll give you my opinion, shouldn't do that. My opinion is, I think it should not be seen from the public right-of-way. That, and if they want to have in their backyard, they can have in their backyard. I just don't think it should be seen from the public right-of-way. I guess I have a little different take on that, because, for, again, thinking about boat owners, for example, and just even a few of my neighbors where they have their boats stored under these things, and how many folks have those in there, and they're fairly, I mean, they are tactful, the ones I'm thinking of are, but I also can think of a few that aren't. Yeah, so I probably wouldn't be quite to the level you are. I definitely don't like it out in front, and I think it should be, you know...
Right, and that's today's code.
That's right. I agree with, with code today. I don't, I guess we'll have to, I don't know if this is, we're having a conversation about the extent of the code today, or in a future conversation.
I think it's starting today, and I'm just on a staff level.
I think it's starting today. And I'm just on a staff level. I, I chose not to write, start writing code yet because I wanted to get these variations and kind of get feedback. So I actually wouldn't mind if you definitely have an opinion. It'd be interesting to see.
You're looking for direction and that's what we're here to give you, I think. And so I'd like, I'd like to have it out and might as well discuss it out while we can.
Well, I guess what I'm hearing is we're trying to regulate a behavior by a code. And I, you know, it's like you said, there's some people that abuse the, the fabric. So I guess, what are we trying to solve here? The unsightly?
And whether.
You know, what, what do we like that we can try to regulate?
Temporary structures. That's what we're trying to regulate. Temporary structures. I mean, it's, it's like, you know, you wouldn't want somebody to set up a, a big tent right up in the front yard of their house.
But I understand that some temporary structures are, look good. So are we just saying, if they look good, we don't want them?
Well, it's in the eye of the beholder. I mean, a lot of people, the people that are getting, you know, tickets for having these things think they look good. But, but in fact, they don't. And in fact, they don't have plans.
That's why I don't understand. They're getting tickets. Why are they getting tickets? Is this because it's in the front yard?
Lot of reasons.
Yeah. If I could give a little background. Yeah, I mean, today, if you have in the front yard, it's just code enforcement. But I think one thing code enforcement is having trouble with, and this is maybe, you know, something I may be able to take a little more look into, but they're having trouble is when you have something inside a structure, it's harder for them to get the court to identify the solid waste and therefore be a nuisance because you're storing, you know, stuff, I'll use a nice terminology, inside of this temporary structure. And so in a sense, it's behind four walls, even though they're membrane four walls. So that, I think that's where I know Nancy Bush is having trouble with, is people start kind of erecting these quasi-structures to hide their stuff. And then it's hard for the judge to come out and say, "Well, you're, it's inside a structure, therefore it's inside your home and you're not having outdoor storage." And so I think it's that outdoor storage versus indoor storage aspect. Whereas if you had a pat rack and you put, you covered your, you know, your garage with stuff, as long as you weren't a fire hazard, that's okay. But if you had that same stuff in your backyard into three different membrane structures, to the judge, that's the same thing as your stuff being in your garage.
So, so from the city perspective, one of the real problems is solid waste per se. And what if, if we weren't able to write in, and I know you guys don't like the structures whatsoever necessarily, but that you could allow a, a structure and have, and write in the definitions of RV or boat or something to that effect, could we do something along those lines so that we tightly identify what could be allowed under that type of structure, eliminating anything outside of four, you know, a four-wheel, two-wheel, whatever, that, then you're not going to have a solid waste issue unless it's a trash boat or something.
Well, that's.
And that's a good attorney question that we can ask.
And I guess to further that, the question I would ask is, if you do that, do you make sure, do you, do you put the stipulation on it that it, that that boat or RV or whatever has to be a licensed vehicle?
That's already a separate part of the code.
So you can't have a junker sitting out there under cover and if it's not running.
You have to be a licensed vehicle.
It has to have contracts and be operable.
And be operable, yeah.
So I can ask our attorney about, can we kind of start regulating content, which is, I'm using that, that word.
Right. That's where I was going.
But we can talk a little bit about it. Another option is, do we say, "You can have these, but you can't have walls?" Because that's one thing I know with Nancy Bush is when we had the whole carport garage discussion, is if you can see in it, if you're stacking stuff in your carport, Nancy can regulate it, but if it's your garage part of your house, then she can't. And that's why that change needed to happen last spring, real quickly, because she did not want carports to be considered the same as garages for her ability to regulate. So maybe something just as simple as, I mean, not understanding kind of the permutations of it is, you can't have walls. Might be, you know. So you still get your boat covered or your RV covered and you, maybe you can go down a third of the way down, but maybe you can't have full walls because that, then that can be, you can regulate the stuff inside of it for solid waste. So I mean, that, I can ask our attorney about that option too.
Well, the other question is, could you, can you, can you legislate that they be in good condition? And how do you identify what's good condition? That, that's another question I ask attorney. Because I think, you know, if you have these things standing there and they're torn to shreds and they're just hanging there and yet, yes, they're illegal, yes, they have an RV under them, but they're shredded, you know, that's, that's an eyesore and a nuisance.
We do have, I think, general descriptions of good condition for buildings. So I think we could go down that path as long as we use definitions of what good condition is. And I think we can list different things and you use comparables. So I think that actually is, we can do that. Because that is pretty clear and objective. The, you know, what, what it can be used for and the walls versus no walls thing, I think I'd have to talk to our city attorney about.
Are we hearing a preference towards nuisance code versus land use code with regard to how this code would be written though?
For me, yeah.
I don't know that part.
Not for me. Not at this point. Not until I hear, you know, more specifics about what is, what is, I mean, you're going to really anger some people there, a lot of people there.
But why, but why are we, why are we talking about this? This is, you know, it's, it's, it actually is a sense of urbanness that we're talking about. And that, that has sort of a rural, and I understand how people feel about Oregon City, but, but we are starting to get denser and bigger. And this is about urbanness. And that, there's just not a place for that in our city. Not in the city limits.
Well, but the question of whether it's, it's planning or, or, I mean, about how it's affected right now and whether it's retroactively applied or not, I mean, that's the question, a hand between the two. And that, we, I'd like to know at least some general, like, how many people are we talking about can be affected that tomorrow, once we pass this, could be cited?
Yeah. On a staff level, land use seems fair, but I don't even know how to begin to look at grandfather. How do you prove that something was up prior? So if we ever did put it in Title 17 for, for planning, I know it'd be a nightmare to have some homeowner try to prove that they've had it up.
I don't think you can. That's the difficulty. That's why I say.
Unless they had it up that August when we took that aerial photo.
Yeah, that's why I think it should be in the nuisance. And I, I mean, I don't know the need to grandfather. And I think that if you've got somebody that's got five of these things lined up in their front yard, and I know of a couple that do, you know, and if we do determine that either, you know, that only one is appropriate on each property, you know, they're going to be mapped either way.
Now, hold on. You said five in the front?
Yeah, that's.
Yeah. Mathematically, that's.
Well, behind the house. Behind the front stall of the house, those, those are lined up.
That's the problem. We're discussing a code that we haven't really.
Yeah.
Correct. See. It was by example is why I was trying to add it.
I don't think this is a unique problem. I was wondering if there's some models from other cities that have dealt with this issue?
Yeah. We, we have looked around. In the metro region, I haven't seen that many, honestly, because I think it's, it's a really hard code, I mean, code enforcement and to nail it down. So when I, when I have seen code, I think Eugene, or it's somewhere in the valley, I mean, it was like the one or two sentence. So the question is, how do you actually implement it? And that's something I can do more due diligence. But I wanted to just have that, this preliminary conversation tonight to get direction and find out where you want it to go. And I can definitely do some more research with other departments. And it's more, now you have your one sentence, how do you actually implement it as a city?
Right. Yeah. And just, just to go back a little bit further. So we're talking about fabric ones now. Is that what we got it down to last time? Not the, not the sort of pole?
No, it'd be the, called membrane structures.
Membrane structures. So the metal roofed ones that sort of come down and over a little bit, but are just shelters for boats. We're not talking about those.
That, they weren't, they weren't brought into this discussion until now.
But that, that's assuming the metal ones. What if they're, what if they're like the tarp like?
Well, that's a membrane structure.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, some cloth over.
Metal structures would be regulated already.
By the building.
Over 200.
Over 200.
See, 200 or over 200.
Yeah.
Right?
And we don't allow membrane over 200.
Right.
Permanently.
But are they? Because you see a lot of these ones where a boat's under it and they're sort of just shaped like this and sort of the sides come down and they're just poles, right?
Mm-hmm.
I don't think that's a building department thing because they don't have a, a foundation.
Well, if it's under 200, it wouldn't be regulated.
It has to be over 200.
Yeah.
200 and then it would kick into.
And if they're new and they're over 200, then they're only permitted if they're compatible with the primary building materials on the house.
Or they get an exception. There's some areas.
Yeah. On a large lot of, 20,000 square feet, that's the code. And then, and so there, there may have, there has to be some compatibility with existing surroundings.
So yeah, I like, that's definitely a good thing to bring up. How do you want to differentiate materials?
Yeah, because these are, these are sort of a nuisance as well, honestly. I mean, there's some that are, you know, they're, they weren't intended for that use. They were intended for a, a more rural kind of setting. They're just, they're just, they're not part of the architecture. They're not part of the vocabulary. So I, I just, they're just, they're pretty offensive as well.
Pole barns.
Huh?
That's why we don't allow pole barns in the city.
Yeah.
I mean, it's fine to put them in a rural area, but.
As long as they're 800 square feet or less, or 20,000 square feet.
Well, exactly, exactly. But who's going to put a, you know, pole barn for that level?
Let me see it.
Do you?
So would the person who's covered his RV with his blue tarp and parks that in his driveway, is that covered by this as well?
That's not a structure. If he took his blue tarp and.
And he put a frame to it.
And Nancy Bush has seen that.
Yeah.
And that's been some of the problems.
So it's okay to cover your RV with the blue tarp and bungee cords?
You just can't have frame under that tarp.
But, but what we're talking about is, is something that doesn't look good, right? We're talking about an eyesore. We're talking about a nuisance that somebody could observe from, off a look right of way. And, and so the, you know, I've seen, I've seen the RVs covered with the blue tarps. And why wouldn't we include that as well if we're talking about eyesores and public nuisance?
I'll add to the list.
You're here.
Well, I, I, this, I mean, you know, these things are, we're not making this stuff up. These are complaints from, from citizens that are, that's where it's coming from.
That's where it's coming from. I mean, so I know there's issue out there. And for those that want what we're talking about here, those are the few that, most of the people are looking out for, you know, that thing looks really bad down the street. So more people are thinking the way we're thinking than, than not.
And I think, being personally, looking at a densifying city and people still wanting their amenities, but yet their law has gotten smaller and they don't want to pay for off-street storage, they come up with these type of solutions.
And I, I'd want to see how many complaints and stuff like that too, if we're going to be talking about it as a complaint issue. How many complaints have we actually seen?
Okay.
Another concern I have about the visibility of these structures from public right of way has to do with the height of the structure. So for example, if your, if your structure is at the top of a hill and there's a six-foot fence and the structure is eight-foot tall and you could see this structure from 200 feet away down the road, but you cannot see it as a pedestrian on the sidewalk in front of the house, how do we deal?
Yeah, that's a first question.
So one thought that I had was that, you know, the, the structure doesn't have to be invisible from the public right of way, but maybe it has to be 90% of structure, 90% out of view. Only 10% of the structure could be in view or that the roof could be in view or, that, that was just a concern that I had, is that, you know, our, our fences are six feet tall in general. And, and in, in general, these structures are, are tall enough to allow a person inside, so.
And, you know, if you use the right of way terminology, which, you know, as long as we create something clear and objective so a code enforcement officer can read it and make, take their pictures and make their findings, there's always going to be a case where they need it and people can still see it just because of our topography of our city.
Sure, yeah.
And we're never going to be able to, unless we just outlaw it. There's always going to be a weird situation where, you know, people from above can look down and see it, but when you're the pedestrian at the street, you can't. And it, I mean, whenever you have a definition like that, there are always going to be outliers.
So by way of, I'm, I'm not sure we're agreeing on nuisance or not at this point, but start time, I mean, is a year enough to give people a year's notification? I mean, to me, I think a year's sufficient. I think, you know, we've, I don't know what it is, but sure. Well, whatever the code, whatever the code is that we come up with, whatever that is. I mean, we're trying to give, Kristi, some, some, something to work with here. So, you know, if we, if you can work with that, maybe a year being the time.
Yeah. We would have to put that into the code, is this is effective.
Right.
At state executive date. And it would probably, I mean, to me, the, this code update will probably be approved by the city commission in March, early April, on worst-case scenario. And we could either go with a January 1, 2011, or some mid-spring 2011 date. But we need to actually write the date in the code. It wouldn't be, I think, well, attorneys will ask this, but it might be harder to say one year from effective. But I can talk to our attorney to figure out how we actually implement that.
Yeah. And it might, it might be nice to be able to look at the code and see what, I mean, what are, what is, what is allowed off-street parking? What is, you know, what are the, what are the requirements? I mean, can you have RVs and boats and all those things? I mean, if that's, if that's not even allowed, then it's.
No, you can have RVs and boats on your property.
On your property.
And the only time is if you have a private CCNR that doesn't allow it. And in Oregon City, I can tell you, not a lot of CCNRs are actually enforced.
Yeah.
That even have.
And does it require them to be back behind the facade of the home?
No.
Okay.
No. That would be, most CCNRs say that. But the city, as long as you're not blocking your RV or your boat, as long as you're not blocking any right-of-way issues, you can have it in your front driveway.
Okay.
It just has to be operable and tact.
Okay. Any other comments regarding this? Did you get enough?
Yeah, I think I have enough. I'll give you an update on the next meeting of where some of these legal questions. And, you know, I may have a, take a stab attempt at code or I may not have that yet and may just get, you know, the code may be our end result and we may just be working towards what we actually write in, in that one or two sentences, rather than go the opposite way of just picking a two.
It'd be, it'd be good to get input from code, from code compliance too. And I'm not that, I'm, I'm trying to develop code specifically for that. I'm not. I'm trying to make it for, for the citizens and for everybody involved. And I want it to be fair. I mean, we all want to be fair with, with what we have. So that might be beneficial.
Yeah. All right.
Okay. So next.
Okay. This is actually a new issue that was brought up by Commissioner Nocita last month. And it looks like it, it can be addressed through this code update. So I'll give you a little background. Right now, archaeological issues, we pretty much send people to the State Historic Preservation Office. And there's an ORS that's a lot like the federal Native American Graves Recreation Act, NAGRA, which just applies to federal. But for the ORS basically says, if you find something and you are property owner, you are obligated to contact SHPO, who then will contact the designated tribe for our area. So today, if I'm a developer and I'm building my subdivision and I start digging up for state excavation, I find something, I'm legally obligated to stop. And the neighbor hears about it, they could call the State Historic Preservation Office today and they could come up and do a stop work order in order to assess what's going on. So that ORS exists today. What we're trying to do is get better cooperation with SHPO in the sense, we would work with them. They would create a map for us. That would be sensitivity areas where they'd take known sites, which obviously they can't share with us, plus probability of known sites, plus a little buffer area. So we'd have a map of the city of higher sensitivity to archaeological resources. And if your land use project fell within that area as part of a submittal requirement, we would need to see that you had contacted the State Historic Preservation Office and they have written back to you about, based on your project, what they think the steps may be. And it may be just monitor, it may be, well, we think it's a high probability, so we want an archaeologist on site while you dig. I mean, it's, you know, the spectrum of what it could be. And just so you know, they could actually ignore SHPO's comments. But at the same time, SHPO could still come out the first day and put a stop work order. So it behooves the developer to work with the State Historic Preservation Office. Because, you know, archaeology, for the most part, is not stopping you from developing. They want to, they want to monitor the site. If anything's found, they want to contact the correct tribes. If, if there's not remains there, they're most likely to do recording. And then you could go continue on with your development. If there are graves there, oftentimes the graves can be, you know, the tribes are okay with them being relocated. So finding something on your site doesn't necessarily stop or preclude you from development, but it's a process you need to go through. And so what this does is adding that extra submittal requirement for site plan, design reviews and subdivisions, partitions, it just gives a developer a heads up at the very beginning of the process. And we as a city are not using it as a criteria for approval or denial. It's just getting those two bodies in contact early on.
So it'll only be on land use applications?
Yes.
What about somebody on an individual site just wants to build a home? It's just a regular site, so they've just got to get a building permit. What happens in that case?
What happens in that case?
Well, we probably would do the same thing and say, we probably can't... That's a good question. Can we require, because it's not a land use, can we require them to contact? I mean, we can give them all that information when they come in, but...
Yeah, when they come in for a building permit.
Can we require that they contact them? Well, we can't get it through this code. It would have to be through the building code. I mean, I have to take a look to see what the other avenue is. But, you know, if you're in a historic district, I have historic review, so 1740. So there would have to be a lot of record outside of historic district or any other overlay zone. So if you're in geologic hazards, we probably could, if you're overlay zone, we probably could still get you in.
So what is the, what's the sense of, like, how inch land are we talking about that would be designated as sensitive?
Yeah.
Before we go pull the trigger on this, I'd like to know what the, how much, how many folks are going to be affected?
Yeah, that is a good question. And I've been having conversations with Susan White, who's the Assistant Archaeologist at SHPO, and she's actually coming to the December City Commission Work Session to brief them on these issues. She was actually very excited that we called her. She said, yes, this is exactly what we want to do. So we're really dovetailing in with their public education. And I can, my question is, too, is, you know, we know sites along the Willamette and Clackamas River will be, basically that whole strip will be sensitivity, because you're most likely to find your Native American resources along rivers. So imagine, basically, the strip along the Willamette and Clackamas. The question is, will, in this map, will we find anything on the hilltop? And that's what I don't know until we get that map from her. My sense is no, my sense is it's probably going to be just the Clackamas and Willamette River areas.
So what additional step does this implement? It just...
It just requires the developer to contact the State Historic Preservation Office and say, "My property at blank, blank, blank street, I'm looking at doing a subdivision. The staff, planning staff, has identified my area is in the sensitivity map area, and I'm required to let you know what I'm doing. And you will be sending a letter back to me giving your recommendations on what type of monitoring should be done." And then that, I will turn in with my land use application.
Prior to...
Prior to completeness. But what, on a staff level, what I like about this is, we're not archaeologists, we can't be archaeologists. I can't know about that information, and we shouldn't be using that as criteria for approval or denial. So I really like this, because it directs them to the correct agency at the very beginning of the process.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't really see a downside in it.
Yeah, the one thing is, this map will not be online. It'll be public, but you have to come into planning to get, to take a look at the map in the sense that we want to see who's coming in to see the map, whereas if it's online, anybody in the world could take a look at it, and we don't know what their motives are. But if you were coming in and asking to see the map, we have, you know, kind of the treasure hunter person, we understand why you're coming in there. But that's what SHPO's recommendation is, we don't put it on our mapping program. We keep it, just, we adopt it, it's public. Like, at one of our meetings here, we'd probably have the map, you know, a hard copy of the version, but whenever we have packets online, we'll just say, hard copy of map will be available at the meeting. And so everyone can see it, but it'll never be available electronically.
Okay. All right.
Okay, so that's, and I'll be able to give you an update in January. It sounds like they are going to be able to make the map for us in December or early January. The second, the third is upzoning commercial land in the South End area. And at our meetings last spring, we went back to Planning Commission and City Commission and said, in 2004, we looked at upzoning commercial in the South End area. There was definitely contention, and it was dropped out of the 2004 updates. You know, we're back here again, what would you like to do? And we heard from both you and the City Commission that they're interested in pursuing it. And so I went to the CIC last month and brought up the issue. And I think what we would like to do is take this kind of out of this code update process and be its own process. And in a sense, we would like to kind of go a step further than just the traditional meet with the CIC and the Neighborhood Association, and really try to pull that area of the city through some type of electronic poll, like a Survey Monkey through a postcard, and really try to get pulse of what they want out there. You know, what kind of amenities would you want, what would you want, and what don't you want? And then once, I mean, and my goal is to have a clear answer, one way or the other. And if the answer is yes, then the second phase is to invite people in and say, "Okay, what kind of, what kind of code should we write for it? Should we have a modified zone? Should it be the mixed-use corridor, should it be neighborhood commercial? Should it be a modified version of those? And where could it be?" So I kind of really see it as a two-phase process. In Phase One, it will be happening this winter with the CIC, and then ideally, that postcard and open house. And the survey will happen February, March. And then, based on the finding, this spring, we'll see direction. And then we can see if we're ready to move forward with Phase Two, which would be the summertime, which is getting the groups together and seeing what would you like to look like. And so we would have, we'll do a separate Measure 56 notice for that. And it'll be really on its own. And I think it'll also give us a good indication of expectations for the last concept planning area, which is South End. And I think we're kind of tailing a little bit of the survey to that as well.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I think that the open house for this is going to be really critical, because this is an educational, this is definitely an education thing of why, why are we, why are we trying to get commercial down that way? Why is it, you know, that, and why don't they want it down there for the things that they've seen? And I think that's going to be the critical part right there.
And I think the website, creating the webpage, and what kind of information will be on the webpage when they get that postcard, I think is really critical, too. So, when I, kind of, my goal is just to keep you updated what's going on and get your feedback and direction. My goal is to make sure the CIC takes a look at the survey, because I want to, I really want their, their finding that the planning division is not out to find, you know, predetermined answer, that we are writing this survey to truly get the pulse of the South End community. And I think what we, when I talked to City Commission at the end of, the first of November, was, at the end of this process, no matter what the answer comes, the CIC can say, "We felt the process was fair," all the way through, and that the survey was fair, and the process was fair, and the public was heard. And so that's kind of, I'm seeing as the CIC's role for this, is saying, really approving the public involvement process.
So this would be a separate process from the South End concept planning process?
Right, and a separate process from this. It'll be a new legislative file number.
Okay.
Yeah, because I know this process will take a lot longer, and so we have to separate it out.
Yeah, it makes sense to me.
Okay, the signed code update, Tony Conkle will be working on that, and he will give you an update at the next meeting. The sign code's in Chapter 15, so it does not need to be part of this legislative file, and it does not need to have a Measure 56 notice. So we can work on that, kind of pretty much to the pleasure of the Planning Commission's time schedule for that. And I'm going to pass it over to Pete, and we'll kind of do the second half of the memo.
With respect to the code amendments that were passed for tree protection, currently, protection of trees is still limited to properties that are under development review or which are within an overlay zone, geologic hazards, or in the natural resource overlay district. We had a work session with the City Commission, which you guys are at, and talking about a program to regulate trees outside of the development review process on private property and what that might entail in terms of staff time and public education. And the consensus is, for the time being, while we have a no-new programs issue with the City Commission, in the meantime, we can work with the Citizens Advisory Committee to talk about the ramifications of a more expanded tree program, what kind of staffing needs that would entail. Most importantly, that would probably require hiring either a city forester or a natural resources planner to work with the public on that kind of a program. So that staff level and arborist expertise is pretty critical to having a fully-fledged city tree program, however you regulate private or public trees. So we'll bring some more information forward. I think, kind of like the situation with the upzoning in South End, it would be very useful for us to gauge community support for regulation of trees on private property through the use of a questionnaire or a poll with some specific questions to get to some of the bigger issues and what kind of fees may be associated with a permitting system to enforce a program like that. So we'll be moving on with that piece of the policy discussion in the new year. In the meantime, we have a drafted annexation policy for tree protection, which the City Commission is seeing a draft of that already. And that can be brought forward as a resolution, as opposed to a land use ordinance separately, because it would be applicable to annexations, which are discretionary discussion item. Such policy is in effect in Lake Oswego and Wilsonsville, and it is advisory-only. Essentially, what it means is that if you have a property which has significant natural resources or trees on it, and you are, and you cut them down prior to a development or an annexation petition to the city, the city can, you know, withhold or impose some sort of moratorium on development unless you mitigate for the, for the removal of the trees or damage to a water resource or something of that. So it's, and then you have, apply a look-back policy for a certain number of years using aerial photography to see what kind of canopy removal was, went on. And so that is, I think that got a consensus support from the City Commission. And I'll also be talking to you about the Tree City USA process, which is somewhat unrelated to the code amendment process. But we did go to the PRC, the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, and they did recommend a Parks and Rec Advisory Committee member be a part of the Tree Committee for the purposes of the Tree City USA application, and also recommended that there be someone on that committee who has an arborist or forestry background. And so we'll be making those amendments to the resolution for the Tree City USA application.
So, question?
Yeah.
This is always, here we're talking about participating in Tree City USA, yet we aren't protecting our trees we already have, unless you're planning on developing and tearing everything down. So that's where we're at today. So it makes absolutely no sense to me. This is ludicrous. In my mind, and inch the way as I understand, I guess in my mind, isn't there, is there anything in the Tree in becoming a Tree USA city? Isn't there something in there that addresses protecting old growth or protecting historic trees or anything like that?
Tree City USA is primarily a public tree and right-of-way program. And it, but, you know, it fosters and provides grants and technical support for planting trees anywhere in your city, but it primarily looks at planting of trees in parks and along streets and right-aways. There are other programs in effect that provide grants for habitat improvement in your city, such as the Nature in the Neighborhoods Grant Program through Metro, Restoration of Habitat Along the Streams, and those sorts of things, which, you know, have a beneficial effect as well. And we're already looking at writing grants with co-applicants for projects of that nature. So there's a variety of ways for the city to do that. But you're right, currently, there's no overarching tree protection code, like in Portland, where you can remove, say, three trees less than eight inches in diameter a year on your property for a no-fee permit. You know, it's a tracking system that the city has. They also have a, another aspect of an overarching program is you have a urban tree management plan, which your tree committee works on and puts together, which looks at canopy and enhancing the tree canopy on private and public property. So that's another scope of work item if this project was to move forward, which requires funding. But while we've passed what we think are some fairly good incentives in the development code and some pretty good regulations that require developers to look at tree protection as they're going through the process, it's difficult for us to regulate on private property right now.
Yeah, and I mean, I knew it would be. It's just, it's, it's really part of the whole urban scheme again.
One nice thing about getting, when you get things like Tree City USA, is you start the education process, you get down that path, where, and result maybe the private tree program, but getting pride and being Tree City, getting education about what that means, it's all kind of a continuum down that path, so that's also helpful, too.
Yeah, and I guess that's what I was thinking about being this Tree City USA, where there's some help, some, maybe not regulation, but at least some help in identifying the key heritage trees in a particular area when they come into the city and let the grant money from that organization maybe come in and help us position ourselves, so we can say, Oregon City is truly a tree, you know, a tree city. And oh, by the way, we have 37 types of heritage trees in the city that are all, that all should be protected, and you should all get behind this, and all of a sudden, that education process is there.
That's an interesting connection. I mean, we've got a new heritage tree designation process. If the ability is there for the Tree City USA process to help fund long-term maintenance of heritage trees on private property, then that's something that I don't know is available. I'll look into it as you get...
Yeah, that'd be great. I mean, that'd be something to discuss when...
Because we were talking about, how do we incentivize landowners to voluntarily, you know, limit their ability to build on their own land through a heritage tree program? So that's an interesting discussion. I'll definitely look into it.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Yeah. The next item up was the differentiating between carports and garages in the code. And this is unrelated to the fabric.
Yeah, this is honestly just, it, last spring, Nancy Bush came to us 11th hour and said, "You can't consider carports and garages the same, because that means I can't regulate stuff." Nancy didn't use the word "stuff," but inside carports. And so we had to get separate definitions for them. But for 1720, our residential design standards, carports and garages are the same. And so we just need to change our 1720 definition to say, "For the purposes of just this chapter, we see carports and garages the same, and keep the separate definitions in Title 17 of garages are this, carports are this, for Nancy Bush's ability for code enforcement." Because she uses the definitions in Title 17 a lot to deal with code enforcement issues. And so it's just a technical issue. This is really a placeholder. I'm working with Laura Butler on some more little tiny changes to 1720, so this will just come back to you.
Okay.
Natural Resource Overlay District, we've actually had a few applications, and we've applied that code, and it seems to be working fairly well so far. It helps that it was replacing an existing chapter of code that protected water resources. So the public is fairly familiar with the old code. Natural Resources Overlay District has, you know, slightly more streamlined process for certain types of properties and easier planting requirements. But there are a few things that we still need to fix. We still need to simplify some of the language for vegetation planting. We need to specify that certain types of soil testing equipment can be motorized as long as they have a limited footprint, because this is a difficult thing. They only use handheld equipment when there's subsurface conditions that need to be inventoried prior to a land use application. That's something that came out of Public Works staff comment. And we also need to differentiate between when a... And we also need to differentiate between when an applicant must apply to the Corps of Engineers for jurisdictional wetland or determination, or just go through the Department of State lands, since those standards are separate from the city's standards. And we will bring a red line version of that next, in the next hearing. Okay, and then the actual red line versions that we've provided to date in your packet are Titles 12, 13, and 14, jurisdiction and management. These are sections that are meant to provide clear authority for the city to enforce certain permit standards. Additionally, when the street sections, street design standards were moved from Chapter 16 into 12, we inadvertently replaced the entire old code, and which would have, has not had the effect of removing the code. It's still there.
It was one of those where we replaced the section that we were adding, but we didn't strike through what we weren't taking away. But, so, it's not that it wasn't taken away, it's just how it got renumbered. And so we just put it in the packet with the appropriate renumbering. So you'll see all the underlines, all that section is still there. We just, for clarity's sake, wanted to renumber it and get it in the record.
So the street design standards were intended to start at Section 170 and follow on to the end of what you see there. So this is just a cleanup type thing. All right, next is, I'm gonna scroll down on this new machine here. Next, we have some sections from the Water Service System, which, updates from the Bob Cullison Sewer Regulation.
As Bob was looking through Title 12, he realized that the water and sewer chapters, 13 and 14, probably would be helpful to add a little bit more jurisdiction ability just to remind people that, while it's in other parts of the code, just you gotta hit your permit. We can deny if you don't have your permit. We have the authority over this. So he kind of replicated what was in Title 12 in the 13, 14 sewer and water chapters.
Next section is, oh, yeah. We have a clear standard for approving constrained streets for minor partitions and small subdivisions. And what we're intending with this is that we want to avoid flag lots, but we also want to have public right of ways that provide public access. And the ability to approve constrained streets for partitions was not as explicit in the previous code.
Right now, it says you have to have a minimum of 30 feet of right of way, and we wanted to match the 20 feet of right of way with the 20 feet of pavement for the absolute minimum. So if we wanted to go down to a really small right of way in a little tiny infill project so we can get the right of way connection and not the flag lot, we wanted to give us the most amount of flexibility in the code.
And 20 feet is the absolute minimum that the fire district will approve for fire access. But there are alternatives, such as fire suppression and sprinkling on residential and commercial development that would allow you to shrink down the right of way.
Before you go, I have a note here, and I wanted to go back to it.
Sure.
On page 265, under the Water Service System, 1304340, it says, "The workmanship and materials for any work performed per this chapter shall be in accordance with the standard deal." What does that address? Does it, when you're dealing with water lines, does it only address the water line itself, or does it address the final outcome of that vehicular pathway that they dig through?
I don't know. I can ask.
The reason I ask is we've, I've seen a lot of things on Washington Street where...
The saw cut, you mean?
The saw cuts, that we're digging, and it's, you know, and I'm just curious as to what kind of, if something doesn't fit there, what does that meet the requirements and what are the requirements?
Yeah, I can look it up.
Bob, do clarify that.
I'm thinking, Tim, in that, I'm thinking it doesn't, because that's probably just the...
The interior.
But I think your comment brings up a larger question, which we can talk to Bob about.
Yeah, if not what covers it.
Yeah, because there is a question of, you know, can we have a little bit higher review on what the, you know, saw cuts look like?
Yeah, what are the requirements? I mean, is it a full pavement? Is it, you know, or, and in some cases, who's to decide?
Right.
You know, and, because I'm already getting points, you know, from the neighborhood perspective, you know, so.
And when we do a saw cut, you know, sometimes it happens with a saw cut, and then we know we'll be paving the street in two years, and so we let that happen because we know that the street's gonna be paved, the full street is gonna be paved in two years. I mean, I think, it might be an email from Nancy Crushhour talking a little bit about when we deal with saw cuts and...
A good example might be South End Road, where we knew that we'd have a half-street improvement, and nothing was done. So half the street got improved, but the other half is still a mess.
Right, because the half-street was a land use decision.
That's right, it was a land use decision. So there's no way we can go back to that and fix that. It's just a matter of, there's gotta be some legal teeth in there.
Yeah, we can take a look at that.
Thank you. Sorry, and, go ahead.
No problem.
All right, and what we've done with, currently, the Public Works Department's working on the final draft of the Public Works Stormwater and Low-Impact Development Manual, which is something that affects all development. It is a pretty technical, detailed manual that explains to builders and engineers how to minimize stormwater runoff into the public stormwater system and try to handle your stormwater on-site through a variety of mechanisms. And they're required to show calculations for impervious surface on their lot that's created and how that stormwater's created. When we were doing the code updates, we wanted to write a section of code that would dovetail with those standards when they were adopted, that gave, that recognized that low-impact development standards should receive some credit in their landscaping. So if you have 20% landscaping requirement on your property, you can use low-impact development standard landscaping, even if it's a little bit different than what the verbatim landscaping standards are in 1762 and 1752, and you can still get full percentage credit for the amount of landscaping that you provide under those standards. And that's what the amendments to 1762-050 are meant to do.
So, I'm sorry, so does this address, this is after development or at the final project?
No, this is us reviewing and planning. So the idea, I mean, it's how to mesh the two together. So we have our new impact development standards that will soon be adopted. So we're looking at rain gardens and infiltration trenches and swales. And those are designed based on the topology of the land, and may not meet our exact little how-to-build-a-perfect-parking-lot code. And so what we want to be able to let developers know is, you know, let's figure out your low-impact development and your landscaping, and we'll kind of work around the specific parking lot code. And we've also, you know, last spring made changes. We kind of created, you know, the perfect Home Depot giant parking lot should look like this. And then when you get to smaller lots, if you want to propose an alternate that kind of meets or exceeds the intent, great. You know, we're not here to say that, "Oh, you don't have exactly five feet of buffering between the right of way and your parking lot, so we can't have your parking lot." And there's ways to work around, or like, your swale needs to be this big and in this location, and it maybe pulls off your overall landscaping a bit or things like that. We want to basically put LID landscaping first, rather than just arbitrary parking lot landscaping part.
Okay, good. So the pre-development, if you will, or the construction phase is covered under, is covered under where they have to put up erosion control? What's that covered under?
That's covered in our erosion control chapter.
That's all, and that's pre-development or construction phase? That's all covered there?
Yeah, that's not changing. That's still, yeah, our erosion control hasn't been...
I just, I was, I wanted to see how those two work together, and now I understand those, so I appreciate that.
And this would also give partial credit for pervious pavement.
Which we've never had before.
So up to 50%. We wanted to put a number on it. So that if you use pervious pavement, or grass pave, or some of these other systems in the right area, subject to city engineer's approval, then you will get a percentage of landscaping credit for that.
And again, a question is, we're talking about it, it seems to me that in some cases, we offer these 50% and things like that to developers to use the pervious process, but it doesn't, that doesn't mesh with our drainage, our city drainage and things like that.
Yeah, pervious is definitely gonna be hard in Oregon City, but there may be specific applications, like parking spaces inside a parking lot, where you aren't gonna have lots of cars moving on it. You know, the key to, I mean, to the technology that's continuously improving, and yes, we have high water table, but there still are some ways that we could potentially use it. Right now, in the low-impact development standards, we aren't proposing it in right of ways. Maybe alleys, definitely in parking lots. So there's kind of really regulated ways of where. And then, right now, we aren't gonna be in charge of maintenance of pervious pavement in the vacuuming or the sweeping, so it's gonna be up to the property owner, if it's an alleyway, to do that maintenance. Because you always want to make sure you're keeping those pores open from debris, and that's the hardest part, is how, how much you have to...
I mean, I think it's a great idea, and I think we should do more of it, and I think giving the 50%, or whatever the percentage rate is excellent. The only concern I have is that if we do that and we give somebody that opportunity, and then they try and build something that we can't handle.
Right, but they're, you know, they're gonna have to do the engineering review.
Yeah.
They're gonna have to show why they can have their storage, so...
How that ties into our line.
Yeah, so you're still gonna show the calc's. In the new Low-Effect Development Handbook, you know, right in the beginning of the handbook is your calc page where you say, you know, "This is my stormwater number. This percentage is gonna be infiltration trenches. This percentage is gonna be a swale. This percentage, I'm using a green roof, and I'm 100%." Or, you know, I might have a small, after I've, you know, there may be a point where you've tried everything and you can't quite get 100%, and maybe that last 10% may be more traditional. But basically, you can't build a pond anymore unless you've shown why you can't do any of those traditional, or you have tried all the traditional, and this is what's left over. So that's the goal in the new LID, is we've given you this large book of options, and based on your site and the hydrology and your calculations, you tell us how you're gonna do it.
Okay, good. I like it.
And there are several other places throughout the code that we need to provide the proper cross-references to the low-impact development standards that we'll bring forward to you in the next hearings. Final section in your packet is the screening of mechanical equipment. One of the sections that we had adopted in here had a fairly onerous piece of code that we think would be better left out, with respect to ground-mounted, above-grade mechanical equipment. We think it's sufficient to say that, to state that ground-mounted, above-grade mechanical equipment shall be screened by ornamental fences, screening enclosures, trees, or shrubs that block at least 80% of the view. That in and of itself is a pretty good standard, but we didn't also want to require that that equipment be, not be installed within 100 feet of a street intersection, because...
Yeah, I had been conversations with our building official, and he really felt, I mean, he was one of those punt further reflections, that that really was onerous, and we felt that we could, I mean, the bigger issue is, are you hiding your HVAC? And so in some situations, it just can't, you have to put it. And, you know, if you're putting it behind a fence with vegetation, is that meeting the larger, this is ground-mounted, is being the larger question? And I think it is. And this whole purpose of this is when you get your HVAC permit over the counter at Building Division, they call, planning staff up now, we walk up, and we say, "Okay, where's your HVAC? Can you see it? If you can, how are you screening it?" We look at the proposal, we sign off. If it meets that, they go, get it go straight and get their building permit. And that's the whole idea, is we can get these things over the counter quickly and not make them go through a larger process. And our building official really just did feel that that 100 feet of the intersection was onerous, when you could end up screening it at the end of the day.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And we're talking about C.
C, yeah.
In the last line there, it says exactly all you need to say, in a way, so.
Yeah, I think that that piece of code came from a community where there was a lot of vacant land, and they had the ability to enforce things like that, but less infill.
Yeah, less infill, and you're putting it where you have an existing, this is really a lot of, this is existing buildings, because that's why you're coming in. Now, if it's, we'll also be reviewing this as part of the Site Plan Designer View, but I think most of the time, this is gonna be the over-the-counter HVAC permit.
Can I ask, let me ask you a question. Due to our topography in this city, as you know, we have a lot of hills, and we have a lot of people that are looking down on tops of rooftops.
Yeah, and this does not affect that.
It does not affect that. I was concerned about that after reading, and I thought, well, wait, now here we are on the bluff, where we're bringing all of our tourists, and you look down at the top of a bunch of roofs, and they're not blocked at all.
Yeah, can I give you my answer to that?
Yeah, sure.
You know, Dan, please comment on this, but what I've heard is that the cost of screening from above is just really cost prohibitive, to the point where if we required that when someone came in for over-the-counter HVAC, it's just, it's not proportional to what they're asking, because you're basically building, and you're building a large box over, and sometimes your roof doesn't have the capacity for that weight, and then you're, then you kind of get down that rabbit hole, well then, because you don't have the capacity for that weight, you have to reinforce it, and what was an easy HVAC permit is now suddenly costing you way more than you thought. And so it's the weight issue of the, of the building where it gets really expensive to cover from the top. You know, the screening sometimes is a weight issue just around the sides, let alone enclosing it.
Right, I guess my question then is, and maybe you can answer this, you screen it, why, I mean, so you screen it with some sort of attractive fencing material that you can't be seen from the street, why couldn't you just put a top over that? I mean, I can't imagine it being that much more weight that would affect that.
Yeah, because now it's got a snow load, potentially a snow load on it. You know, most HVAC stuff, you know, it's blown all the way up, and so you gotta have a louver system, and then the whole thing is really a big sail up there, right? The wind's catching it, and so, then you gotta tie that thing down into the structure. Now you're dealing with the structure of the building, as opposed to just sort of little...
Right, a screen.
Screens up there, you know, that, so it gets away from you really quickly.
Yeah, I can see that. I just, it concerns me because of the topography.
I know. The solution, unfortunately, just, I don't think is there. For pre-existing buildings, it's just not there.
I just wanted, yeah, for new, though, I mean, we can, that's something that could be engineered in.
Yeah, it could be engineered in.
Or, I guess, well, I guess, I would say, if it's a new use, and they're looking at reengineering, do you have any flexibility there?
But then, as a canary, we're trying to encourage redevelopment of Main Street. And I think Dan just hits it. It gets really cost prohibitive. Because you also, remember, you have to vent it, so the louvers, you're venting it for air, but you're also covering it, neither snow load, neither structural, and I don't wanna make up a number, but, you know, suddenly it's $20,000 to cover this.
Okay, well, I'm sure it'll come up again, but I just thought I'd throw that out, because that's something that's really pretty obvious to me that we're having a problem with there.
Well, and I do know, even just getting people to screen things is a cost that they weren't even anticipating, and it's, you know, sometimes double the cost of the HVAC unit themselves. So, I mean, that in itself, not the ground unit fence, I mean, that's not the problem, it's the creating a visually attractive screen on the roof, that's the most expensive option. So we try to get people to sight it, you know, in a place in the building where you can't see it. You know, so can you, if it's a new building, you know, make sure you put it in the middle of the building so you can't see it from the street.
Leaf gardens can provide an attractive screen, and if leaf gardens could be somehow encouraged, you know, maybe it's not through the planning code, maybe it's something that Oregon City Downtown Project can do, but it seems like that, you know, it is one approach, one alternative to putting screens on these things. And, you know, I think it would make a big difference in, to the eye.
Yeah, I know Phil Yates has a... Yeah, I know Phil Yates has an art project that he's working on there.
I'm wondering if there's been any discussion with the builders of these products to make them more visually attractive and still, you know, instead of a big green box.
Yeah, I mean, typically what you want to try and do is get some sort of perforated metal, right, so that it's not a full screen, and then, you know, that's typically the solution. It looks like what we're asking here is that it needs to be the primary materials used, you know, in the structure, which is a lot more than what most jurisdictions do, you know, that it's integrating, as opposed to being this metal thing up there.
Yeah.
And that's assuming you're looking up at it, as opposed to looking down at it. That's my concern.
Yeah, and then the down part is that it's the covering the top.
It's covering the top. It's got to breathe.
I understand that. I just was curious.
It's just, yeah, nobody's come up with anything economical. And I know this, you know, working on high-rises in downtown Portland, and you got the same thing, and you got way bigger wind loads, and it's just a real, here you got a big budget on a high-rise, and yet, just to get parapets around this thing is costing a lot of money.
Okay, well, okay, thanks.
Going back to B, we wanted to, on wall-mounted mechanical equipment, we wanted to give the option to paint units to match the building as a, as a fourth option for screening.
Sometimes...
Pant them or paint them?
Pant them, apparently. Oh, yeah, unfortunately.
You'll have an eye there.
Yeah. That is my mistake. I apologize. Yeah, and we've gotten that. Sometimes it's, you know, they take an existing window, and they want to put an exhaust system. And, I mean, the easiest way to make that go away is to make them paint it the same color as the exterior wall. And we want to give that an allowed option, so.
And the final change that we're wanting to add is an exemption from screening for solar energy photovoltaic equipment or wind power generating equipment. Since this would be applied through Site Plan and Design Review, and it would not preclude the historic review board process from providing screening for sensitive property.
Yeah, if it's a designated historic site, that's a whole separate review for solar panels being appropriate. And we do approve solar panels. It's often in the rear elevation, so hopefully you're oriented the right way. And so the idea is, you know, if you generally can't really see it from the primary elevation, and I've done it on a staff level, there's one where you couldn't see it. So, I mean, I definitely approve that on a staff level.
You know, we were talking about the elevator, and having the elevator have solar panels that would mount it on a roof, and have that be a model project that would actually create enough power to operate the elevator.
Cool, great idea.
And it was, it entered a lot of interesting discussion, I can tell you.
So, that's all we have right now, probably about the same number of red line versions you'll get next hearing. We, I need to sit down and work with Laura Butler. We haven't been able to connect the last two weeks. There'll be some small changes to seventeen twenty residential design. And then I'm also just going to take a new look, fresh look at seventeen sixty-two Site Plan Design Review and Cottage Housing, just to make sure that, you know, we're not missing anything. And unfortunately, it'd been nice to have had some practice projects, and I haven't gotten them that much for Site Plan Design Review yet. So Tony is looking at the Cove for multifamily for their project that's coming in, and he'll be able to test it a little bit, but they haven't fully turned that application in. So maybe we'll have a test project, we'll try to review a house and see how it works.
Okay, good. So our next meeting is, did you say we, December?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth?
Fourteenth, not the first, huh?
Yeah.
Sorry, no, the fourteenth, right, 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 right.
And then, just confirmation to cancel a December twenty-eighth meeting. I mean, we don't necessarily, I don't think we need to, you do have two land use files at the next meeting. You have a small island annexation that's off of Glen Oak Road that the City Commission gave a free fee for the annexation. It's right below the high school and Myers Road. It was, for some reason, left out. It's really, honestly, a one tax lot island, and they're coming in. And then the other one is a telecommunications application for the riff of the old Oregon City High School. So those two things will be in two weeks, and then we'll be coming up in the rear at the end of the meeting with our additional code changes. But, you know, we'll review this to the level you want to, and then we can continue it in January.
Okay, good. Any other questions? All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will adjourn the meeting at this time. Thank you, and happy holidays.